Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to our Tuesday, October the 29th, City Council Meeting. I now call this meeting to order. I trust that your cellphones have been placed on silence. In the place of Councilwoman Hill, who in her absence was supposed to do the pledge, I'm going to ask you to stand and render the proper salute as we place the flag.
Let the nations, super black, of the United States of America, and super republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have no special presentations this afternoon. Could I have a motion on the minutes? We have a motion on the minutes with a proper second. Without objections, the minutes will stand as they are recorded. Council, one note I want to make for next week is typically our strategic planning week, but we will not have strategic planning next week because of the election, and we will also not recess next week. We will just roll straight through. So we will begin next week at 3:30 and then just continue right through without recess. We will need an attorney-client privilege meeting this afternoon, so we will recess after our committees. All right, looking at this week's agenda, we have a couple of ordinances on final reading. Any questions or comments on any of our final readings for this week? If not, we'll drop down to one item under ordinances, first reading. Any questions or concerns over amending our alcoholic beverage ordinance? All right, moving down into resolutions. We do have several for your consideration this week. If you have any questions concerning parks, public works, or wastewater, we do have a committee this afternoon that will be addressing any of those items. But anything, any questions under council office, economic development, mayor's office, or police? Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had a quick question about 9B with the agreement with HYA. Somebody can address for me.
Okay.
Anybody?
9B, under economic development. Where's Kevin? Kevin?
Oh, we're gonna s-
Oh, okay.
Well, we can paper rock scissors if that works out for you.
9A?
9B, I believe. Correct? 9B?
It is, it's an extension of a contract with HYA for premise use. I have no problem with that part of it, but I just wanted confirmation. From what I was reading, said for the term of February 1, 2025, through June 30, 2025, with an option to renew for one additional term of four years. I didn't know if that was, if the dates were correct, or if this was an extension before the possibility of renewal?
Let me find out for sure about that date. I didn't realize that those dates were on there like that. Let me make sure that it's good. Backs up.
That's fine. I just want to make sure that before we're voting on this that we do have the dates accurately stated.
I'll do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, you good, sir?
I'm good.
All right. Oh, 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 Richard. Hit your log, Councilwoman Coonrod. There we go.
D, Richard, the Artsville grant. What is that?
The Artsville grant? Which, what, which number are you on, Councilman?
I'm sorry, I'm on 9D.
9D for next, for? This is under the mayor's office?
Yes.
I'm going to defer to someone other than myself to answer that question.
Okay.
Seth's gonna answer. So, the community change grant, it's a track-two application under the EPA. This is associated with the Bloomberg American Sustainable Cities Program. This is a planning and engagement grant that the EPA is providing to communities, so that way we can help kind of bring the governmental decision-making process and the process down to the constituent level. So they engage with us at an early level. We've talked with Dan Reuter over in planning. We've talked with some of the housing offices, kind of working some maybe anti-displacement work into that as well. But it's really just kind of helping to develop on leadership levels, getting the constituents or the residents' input on what environmental and climate issues that they have in their areas, and creating plans after that. So there's no hard output as far as we're going to build this, we're going to build that. It's just an engagement and planning grant.
Okay, well, my question was EPA and Artsville?
Yes.
And a million dollars. I just don't know what it's all about. What happens Artsville and EPA and?
So it does seem a little odd at first. This is kind of a new approach that the EPA is taking where they want, they require us to have a community partner to do the engagement, and that community partner is the lead agency that will actually do the engagement work. They are not the sustainability experts. Our sustainability department will be working and bringing that in, but they will be administering that money over a three-year period. So it's a three-year grant. It's not one million in one year. It's broken up over that three million, and they will be really just facilitators of the engagement process.
So Artsville is facilitating an Environmental Protection Agency grant to do what?
That's the hard part. It's a, it is planning and engagement. That is the output. The output there is, at the end of this, there will not be like an actual building done. There won't be, you know, a new plant or anything. It is purely planning engagement. So at the end of it, we should have plans. We should have residents that feel like they're involved in the planning process, and those plans will actually get turned over to whatever relevant department is working with us, whether it's the RPA, whether it's the housing office, or it's the, our new Basque team.
So we don't know what the plans are for, but we're good.
Dan, you want to come up and share yours?
I mean, I think it's great, but it's an interesting topic.
EPA has funds available for, and through this program, to do lots of kinds of engagement. When we started talking about how might we use this in Chattanooga, we felt there's so many good things happening within city government, different departments, within planning department, and we wanted to help the community engage us and be more aware of the different programs, projects, plans. And so we talked about what was the best way to do that. Artsville and some other nonprofits will work together to help get with the community residents.
Facilitators.
And Artsville will do it through trying to get folks to come to a public meeting or something using art. So they might have some kind of dance, or, I'm making this, or public art, or something like that, where they bring people together, and then we talk about something good that's happening in the police department or in parks and outdoors. So it's really just trying to engage city government.
Okay, that's fine. It's different, yeah.
It is there, it is different, I'll give you that.
That's great. Okay, thank you.
You good, Councilwoman? Yeah, okay. All right, and we will cover parks, public works, and wastewater in our committees following just a few minutes. Now, looking ahead to next week's proposed agenda. Our ordinance is on first reading this week will be on final next week. Then we do have one ordinance from the city attorney office for next week. Okay? Any questions or comments concerning that? Looking down then to resolutions under next week. A couple of appointments, some items under economic development. And then our parks and public works will be covered in committee today as well. Questions or comments? Okay? Looking at your purchase questions or purchase items this afternoon. We just have two items for your consideration. Any questions, comments concerning those? If not, looking at your future considerations. Any questions or comments concerning future considerations? Captain Ledford.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If we could turn our attention to planning item B, the extension and the grace period resulting out of ordinance or resolution 32246. Karen, are you with us? There you are. Karen, can you confirm that this is the action that we needed to extend the six-month effective date?
Yes, so the, when the zoning ordinance was passed by council in July, we gave an effective date four months out, which was November 20th. Also accompanying the zoning ordinance needs to be the map. We originally planned to get to planning commission in October, but we are now heading to planning commission in November. So we are asking to push out the effective date of the ordinance, so it would be hopefully at the same time as the map in mid-December. And then that also pushes out the grace period one more month. We established the grace period with council's approval about a month ago, giving to folks time to apply for both the old zone, or use their old zone or new zone. So yes, this is mostly needed to make sure the map catches up, and hopefully both will become effective at the same time. And the effective date would be one day after the tentative date adoption, December 17th.
Very good. And while I have you here, can you explain a little bit to us on our next planning and zoning committee what we should expect since we are in the timeframe that we are in?
So we have zoning cases for the new zoning are heading to council, but we don't have the new zoning map in place. So those zoning applications, instead of being heard by council in November, will be slated for the December 10th and 17th meeting, and we would communicate that to applicants. They're kind of already aware of it, knowing that the zoning map is heading, is one month behind. So we will work with the city attorney's office to make sure we have that correct on the agenda. We do have one item, which are some immediate amendments to the new zoning ordinance that will be coming before council at the November meeting.
Very good. And we have one item in particular. I'll be adding to that list for discussion as well. Karen, thank you. Do we have anything else we need to do? I know I've been pushing on setting up your meetings for the-
Yes. We have, I think, tentative dates for the last two. We owe Councilman Ledford your date, and Councilwoman Coonrod your date. And I think we have this slated for the 7th and the 14th, and we'll be double-booked on the 7th, but I think we've worked out our timing.
Oh, we can do it.
So confirm those.
This is in relation to our equivalency mapping?
Yes.
To make sure that we fulfill that promise?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thanks, Karen. Chairman, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, anything else under future considerations? All right, very well. I'm not seeing any other lights, so at this time, I'm going to turn the chair over to Captain Hester for Parks and Public Works. Welcome to Parks and Public Works Committee. Can we accept the minutes? Madam Clerk?
MR?
Go ahead, go ahead.
MR. 20240151, Catalyst Design Group, Chris Akers. An ordinance abandoned enclosing a sanitary sewer eneasement in the 100th block of North Lyerly Street, beginning at MHS 146K024, thence northwest some 504 feet to point of 10 feet before MHS 146K033. Tax maps number 146KL048, as detailed on the attached map, subject to certain conditions.
I see it. No hands? 9F, please.
A resolution to amend resolution number 32207 to state that River City Company will, will be the company that provides the service for the evolving our riverfront parks framework to design a development management agreement between the River City Company, the city of Chattanooga, and Hamilton County, Tennessee, for the cost of 1.2 million.
I see. No hands? Can we do GH9? Hands up? You just gotta, is it Councilwoman Coonrod?
Yeah. It's still not, it's all towed up over here.
Councilwoman Coonrod?
Thank you, Chair. I just got a couple of questions. Thank you, Jermaine, he's not here, but thank you for, and Martin for taking my concerns and making sure that we have an agreement with the Hamilton County government. But with the 500, it's not mentioned here in this resolution, but the $500,000 that we're giving to River City, what exactly would they be using it might afford?
The longer I get, the longer it takes me to walk. I'd like to thank for the question. We are paying for what we call 50% design drawings to advance the plans that were shown to you last time that will prepare us to make the ask for the Blue Cross Blue Shield grant that we asked permission to apply for last time, and allow us to move into construction estimate and construction documents that would then be put out to bid at such time as the council comes up with the funding.
Okay, and so we will follow the city's bidding process when River City get ready to bid it out?
We are hiring River City with this interlocal agreement, and then River City will be picking their vendors from that point.
Okay, so I'm gonna defer this question. You threw me off with the hiring them, Phil. We talked previously, we said and discussed that because they already had provided the plans to council River City. Now the conversation about hiring them didn't come up. So does that mean we go through a different process? Because what I've been familiar with us doing is that if we're gonna look to hire a company for over a certain amount that we can just go along with, so 500,000, why wasn't it put out to any company to say we're gonna, we want to work? Or who would want to be a part of this project? Even though that we've historically used River City or a design company, and I'm not against them, but I want to make sure that we're doing the process right, because when you using words and language like hire, that gives a whole different tape.
Yes, ma'am. And the caption that was read just a minute ago was not the current caption, I believe, we have in our resolutions for today. As I read it, it was a resolution to amend resolution 32207 to state that River City Company is to provide consulting services for evolving outdoor riverfront parks based on an interlocal agreement between the city of Chattanooga, Hamilton County, and River City for a cost of $500,000 from the city and $700,000 from Hamilton County, not to exceed 1.2 million as set forth in the attached agreement. And so there is an agreement that is an interlocal agreement between the city of Chattanooga, Hamilton County, and River City, providing that they will do certain services. They have already done a design plan here for the riverfront, and in accordance with that, they are familiar with the at least areas that need to have improvements. If there are costs that occur in the course of that money that has been provided here, then it'll have to go through our purchasing policies in order to be able to complete that as it goes forward. But that's, that's what the interlocal agreement does.
Okay, so do we need to have that here for F? All of what you just said, so our community, they can know exactly what's going on, why it happened? Because when we get phone calls?
Yes, ma'am.
It's why did you give them 500,000, like you just, why they didn't have to go through a process? So if another organization come up, James Construction or James Design, they may feel like, well, we can just give them 500,000 too. Well, it's a why or a reason that we've selected them already previously, or what happened? I don't know what that process was, but it's coming to us like, okay, we're gonna amend this resolution to make sure that they're the people that's gonna continue to do the work, when normally we'll just bid it out. I'm about being fair for all people, because we're gonna be the ones that's getting the phone calls, not Martin, not River City, not the mayor's office, so that it's clear. So we need to make sure that, then, because what we received in our email, I'm not seeing it here.
Yes, ma'am.
So if we can get that updated.
And originally, there was a resolution authorizing River City to be involved and to provide a plan. They provided that plan, presented it to the council, and that's the reason for the interlocal agreement allowing them to implement with the city and the county at this point.
Right, now, based on if we give them 500,000. So they've been created the plan months ago, a year or so ago, probably. Now we're just now amending that resolu, this, this, I'm just telling you what it looked like. We approved for them to create the plan months ago, a year ago. They created, they presented it. Now we're going back to that same resolution, saying now we want to add them into something that we approved a long time ago. It, it don't look right, but I get it. You, the city attorney, you're saying, as long as we have the interlocal agreement, that we're good.
Yes, ma'am. And I'm wanting to make sure that the county is responsible for $700,000, and the city for $500,000 of that money, and that we have an agreement saying how that will go forward.
Okay, I'm only concerned what the city gonna do, and making sure that our process is done right. So when we get those phone calls, we can say, hey, this was the process.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all I'm concerned about. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Saying, F, the language hasn't changed? The, the language, at least, I think we read, didn't have the interlocal agreement in here, and it's attached to your, to your resolution. We don't have it. Chair, you didn't have it changed by the decision? Well, yeah, I think we could get an updated version of that on our agenda. We will for this evening. Okay, thank you, thank you. Can we read GH9, please?
A resolution authorizing the appointment of Jason Padilla as special police officer and arm for the city of Chattanooga Department of Public Works to perform duties expressly limited to the performance of the duties in his position as a codes inspector two. H, a resolution authorizing the appointment of Matthew Cooper as a special police officer and arm for the city of Chattanooga Department of Public Works to perform duties expressly limited to the performance of duties in his position as a building inspector two. I, a resolution authorizing the administrator for the Department of Public Works to renew contract number S21009101 with CTI Engineers, Inc. For the landfill deficiency recommendations and repairs to the liner, li- li- etche and gas collection systems at the city and summit landfills for year three of four in the amount of $48,000. I'm sorry, $485,000.
Thank you, thank you. I see no hands? J, please.
A resolution authorizing the administrator for the water, the wastewater department to award contract number W23020201 Seneca Avenue Sanitary Sewer Project to the Tally Construction Company, Inc. of Chattanooga, Tennessee, for the sanitary sewer improvements on Seneca Avenue in the amount of $465,682.90, with a contingency in the amount of $46,568.29, for a total amount of $512,521.19.
I see no hands? 9H, please.
A resolution to amend resolution number 32267 for the Department of Parks and Outdoors to enter a third amendment in the Aquarium Plasma Water Feature Maintenance Agreement with the Tennessee Aquarium in the substanti, in substantially the form attached for the increase of 5% annually for the next three years, bringing the yearly total up to $373,334 for the third year.
All right, please.
A resolution authorizing the administrator for the Department of Public Works to execute the consent and assignment for all purchase orders for vendor number 486695, Art Tech Design Group, Inc., to Tinker M.A.L.L.C. Relative to the following purchase orders on blanket call contracts, on on-call blanket contracts for architectural services, contract number E22026101, purchase agreement number 100558, with purchase order number 143614 for DRC Interior Improvements, M23007556681, for Wood Recycle Center Facility, C17017101, and 552214 for East Lake YFD Center Improvements, Y17005101.
Thank you. This concludes Parks and Public Works Committee. To Jeremy, just a guy, to every man and woman who live the faith, thank you for what you do. Legislative. Legislative Committee is next.
Thank you, Councilman, I appreciate that. All right, we'll call over our legislative committee. Have a motion on the minutes? Good, and a motion and a second. Minutes will stand as recorded without objection. We have one item this afternoon to discuss in legislative committee. This is a potential ordinance brought forward by Councilwoman Coonrod over mass violence. And I'm going to hand it over to the sponsor to give us a little detail and information about this.
Thank you, Chair. So we know that the school system may have an ordinance in place to protect their schools, and so we should do the same thing to kind of mimic the same thing as our school system is to protect our community centers. Why? Because mass violence has been an issue within our community, whether it's verbally said, if it's written on paper, if they're actually showing up on gun, with guns, to actually do the act. Since I've presented this, we've had gunshot bullets come through Eastdale Community Center that has yet to be repaired, and we've also had mass threats of violence communicated at Washington Hills Stu, uh, Center where kids was asked to leave the premises. So, you know, protecting our community spaces is, it has to be a priority right now. We can't just say, oh, those are kids, they don't know what they're saying, we don't know, they don't know what they're doing, they don't understand, and then they come back and they kill the whole, shooting people, doing whatever, fighting, and those kind of things. And our centers are meant to be community safe haven spaces where people, families, children, neighbors, and people come and gather. So we must make sure that they feel safe at all times. So I wanted to present this to the council to make sure that we're having measures in place, we're being proactive instead of reactive and waiting until something happens, that we know, hey, this is the process, it's a level of accountability for any adult or kid that may, you know, use any means of violence around our community centers. There is a process the administrator can, you know, say, hey, you're banned from the center, or whatever actions they choose to use. Ban, it doesn't have to mean that it's for a lifetime of being banned. It could say, hey, until we feel like that, the level of accountability and acceptance of what you've done, you're remorseful for that and come back, or whatever the administrator say that it is. Hey, if they do get removed from the center, the parents do have a due process where, you know, they can go talk in front of the city court judge, or I like to add, we talk, I talked to Phil about this, 17 and under can go to the juvenile court judge and ask, and there could be some remedy in that form.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman. I actually do not see any lights. I expect that most, okay. I expect that most people will hit their light after I say I don't see any lights. Chairman?
Of course. So Councilwoman, in this, this may be more of a question for administration, but under section 25-40, C1, and it says, "A person who has knowledge of a threat of mass violence on a community center should report it immediately to law enforcement." And I guess my question, my question is, if we need to address it here, or if there is a policy in place that addresses sort of an immediate reaction by a director, or manager, I think that's what we're calling with the community centers, an immediate reaction by the manager, what is deemed appropriate, like if they are aware, even, and maybe not even, of course, mass violence is, is defined as two or more, but even if it's one, if, if another child is getting severely beaten, or if there is violence threatened or being acted upon, that manager, do we have, do we have some policy in place for how that manager is supposed to react?
There isn't currently. I know Carol and I, we have been talking about that, is that something need to be in place, because what we've seen is that it's happened on two occasions that I'm aware of, and it was, one manager did lose his job because he intervened, and then another manager was able to come back to work. So there needs to be something in place, because if a director is trying to break up a fight, you know, they could lose their job now how it is if they hold one harder than somebody think they should, but there is no protections really for our employees, because they could lose their job just for intervening.
Could, could we call Carol up to?
Yeah, absolutely.
At least address this, please. Carol, you may come in up. So talk to me a little bit about, so apparently there's not a policy. Is that something that we need to address in this ordinance? So, um, talk to me a little bit about, uh, so apparently there's not a policy. Is that something that we need to address in this ordinance? Or is this something that could be addressed through policy? Um, how a manager is supposed to react that would protect them from um, discipline, I guess, later if, if they were trying to intervene in a fight where maybe one child was getting severely harmed? Or if there was uh, a threat on that manager's life?
So, um, we are currently having some general meetings. We've had um, one where we kind of had a roundtable around this conversation where we can develop an internal policy on how our managers should react to the mass violence. I will say right now, in most cases, uh, if they feel like there is a threat, they are calling the police uh, in cases, just historically. And I know as Councilwoman Coonrod uh, mentioned, we've had some situations where employees lost their jobs and what have you. So the center managers are a bit confused right now in terms of, is it okay if I touch a child because there's a level of fear? Well, if I intervene and try to break up a fight, as Councilwoman Coonrod said, we don't have anything in black and white right now because we've just come into this season where that has become a higher level issue than it had been in the past. And so that triggered us to start having conversation with our police department, our center managers. Uh, I think we had community health involved because of what's going on. So we started the conversation because we know it's needed.
So, I'm not sure if that answered my question, but, so is that um, is that something, Councilwoman Coonrod, that we need to address in this legislation?
Yes, we can, we can add it in this legislation too, yes. Whatever the council want to add to strengthen it or take out, um, that's what we're here for. We're a team. This is a council effort, not just a Coonrod effort.
So, do you feel comfortable with something being added to this legislation? Or, like I said, is this something that, that we could address through policy?
Well, what I think would work well is if we add a high-level amount of content where it's not down in the weeds with it. Um, and then we still have an internal policy that spells it out from an employee perspective, because I'm not sure from a policy perspective, if we wanted to be that detailed, I'm, I'm not sure. But I know it should be mentioned uh, as it relates to the consequences that follow and the procedures that should be taken and the steps should be taken. And then in the departmental level, it would be kind of like the employee, employee information guide. Where we would go line up online if this happens, if that happens, if this happens. I'm not sure if you wanted that detailed in this particular ordinance.
Okay. Councilwoman, I'm not wanting to hold up this ordinance, but at the same time, if we need to address um, you know, some protection for the managers in this, um, you know, if they intervene in a you know, in an altercation between two youths, or even if, if we're talking about a youth is trying to threaten them. Uh, I'll kind of, this is your legislation, I'll kind of leave it up to you, but if you feel comfortable letting this be handled through policy, I just, I just feel like this needs to be addressed and this, I think, is a perfect time to address it to make sure that, you know, that we offer some protection. Well, not only for the, for the managers, but um, a- and, and our police have a great response time, but a lot of damage could be done from the time a manager calls. If we're having a serious situation, a child is um, you know.
Yes.
In a, in a fight or, or being severely beaten. I mean, a, a lot of time there could be some immediate intervene, intervention there that I think could be appropriate.
Yes, I agree with the protection. I absolutely, I'd be happy to assist.
I will do, thank you. Yes, true. Um, let's, so um, Phil, if you could add language around protections for our employees
Sure.
in here and uh, update it, recircle it out.
Okay.
You good, sir?
I'm good, thank you.
All right. Moving on, Councilman Leffler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, first, let me acknowledge and thank the councilwoman for bringing this forward and for thinking um, along these lines. I appreciate it very much. So minor technical questions, if, if I may. Uh, if we move into item D. Uh, if we could, we don't have to do this today, I would like to know how restitution would be determined, how costs are determined, and how damages are defined. That would help me tremendously. And then in moving further into that paragraph, it references school property and school-related activity. And I think that language, if the city attorney agrees with me, should say community center or I, I, I don't think it's supposed to say school.
Yes.
If I read that correctly.
Yes, sir.
That would, uh, that might cause uh, some issues in interpretation of the language. So those are my three questions and how restitution costs and damages resulting from the disruption, uh, and then also the language change from school property and school-related activity to the appropriate language. Thank you. Thank you, Chairwoman, or Councilwoman for bringing that forward.
You good, sir?
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Burris?
Yes, thank you, uh, Councilwoman, for bringing it forward. So, I think I have a bias that where you do, I would disagree a bit, that you do put details in policy. The law is, is uh, more more oversight of policy, because you want to be able to have very detailed policy that can be changed as the need occurs. Once you put thing, things in an ordinance, then uh, it's much, i- i- it's, it's not as flexible. So I would like to see, um, uh, Ms. Hunter, I would, if you don't mind. I would like you to consider, um, uh, always putting the details making them more local uh, and more germane to the community centers having, having detailed policies, not vague and overbroad policies. Because I think they're much easier to work through that way and much easier to change internally as the need arises. The second thing is, I'm looking at item B on the first page. A person who recklessly, by means of communication, et cetera, et cetera, be barred from attending further community center events by the administrator after an opportunity be heard. That assumes an outcome. I think that it's much better to say something about they may be barred from further uh, and have a direct appeal to. And this is my legal question. The, the, I think that community center directors, because of what happened unfortunately in the past in other occasions in community centers, the action needs to be right there at the community center, not waiting for a judge to hear it. In other words, the policy should be that if a child or a parent or whoever uh, misbehave or act in any dangerous fashion, it should be policy, internal policy. That person is asked to leave immediately with the right of appeal to a court.
Yes.
Uh, this assumes guilt, and I think you might run into a due process fight there. Uh, the same thing, uh, just for you to consider. I think that what the councilwoman is, is suggesting is, is, needs to be done. It's, it's, it needs to be done. It's the issue that needs to be addressed and that's safety in the community centers. So I really think that it should be a policy of every center of that organization that right there, when something happens, a person can be immediately banned with right of appeal to, uh, I, I guess it would be, uh, Chancery Court, right? Or city court?
Could be city court or Chancery Court. It's our ordinance, it could be city court.
Well, I think city court is good. The other thing, any person who has knowledge of a threat shall immediately. I'm not sure how enforceable that is. Uh, we may all have knowledge of a threat and what do we do? Just, if I don't run and tell somebody, then I'm assumed guilty. There again, I think we could tighten it up a little bit so that, that the end effect is met. And once again, I think that may be under policies that are directly applicable with appeal to court. Just a thought, but I think that hits the uh, you're not running into due process. I think it gives the community center directors immediately the right to address the issue with right of appeal. Uh, D is, I, I'm sorry if it's verbatim from the legislature, but it's inarticulately worded. It assumes that somebody is guilty from court. Um, and I don't think that's what we mean to say. So, I think what councilwoman came up with is, is very good. The basic idea is very good. I wanted a process that works and gives the community centers direct opportunity to enforce stuff in their community center and not be afraid to touch anyone, which is absurd. Um, because kids are going to get hurt, hurt while we're try, we, we hire good people to do a good job.
Right.
We ought to let them do it. And uh, having to go to court to have the court decide, um, I don't know that that's the direct action you want, Mr. Chair, so just some thoughts.
Thank you, councilwoman. I am, another light back to Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So do the, the center managers, they don't have that, um, ability to make those judgments now?
Yes, they can ban someone from the center right now. Like if people come in sagging, smell like, smelling like marijuana, things like that, they can remove them immediately and depending on the nature of the infraction, they have banned, um, citizens from the centers. Now, as it relates to an appeal process and things on that level, we don't have anything on that level, but we do give them the right to ban. The center managers have that. They don't have to wait for the administrator to make that decision.
And I know the incident where they broke up a fight, someone did lose their job, but I don't know, uh, at any given point, if I'm in the center and there's two people jumping on another person, that I'm going to stand there and sit there until somebody, I mean, it's just not going to happen. Okay, so I'm going to do what I need to do. Snatch up, pull, drag, it just, it's not going to matter at that point. Um, because you need to stop it, um, before the officers get there, even though their response time is great. You, someone could be killed before they get there. And then what? You standing there and you look? And they standing there, you allow them to just continue to kick, beat, do whatever they decide they want, harm they want to inflict upon anyone. So, I pray they don't do it while I'm in there, because, um, um, yeah. I'm, I'm just not going to go for that. Um, but in this, um, ordinance here that, um, you brought forth, Councilwoman Coonrod, I think it would be great to make sure that the, the center managers have, uh, some input on this as to um, them having the ability to make decisions on some things. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
May I ask a question?
Yes ma'am, go right ahead.
Councilman Henderson, you, uh, noted that you did not want to delay the ordinance, but now we have the other items that we need to talk about in detail. So is there a timeline that we're looking at so that we can get input from the center managers? Take into consideration everything that Councilwoman Burris has shared as well as, um, anyone else, so that we can make sure that it's all included?
Well, I, I would defer, uh, to Councilwoman Coonrod. I, I don't want to, I don't want to delay her legislation. But if, if she is willing to, to look at this and if it, you know, takes some time, I, I, you know, I don't want to I don't want to cause her a delay in bringing something forward, but if, if she thinks it's worthy, you know, to address it at this time, then I'd, I would defer to Councilwoman Coonrod as far as kind of working through this to develop something to put in here. And it may, and it may be something as simple as, you know, we'll develop policy to address uh, physical restraint in the, in the, in the centers. Uh, it, it, I mean, I think what Councilwoman, uh, Burris was referring to is you don't want to get too specific in the, in the ordinance that, that specificity uh, comes through policy. You didn't think I could get that out, did you?
I didn't either.
But, you know, we, we could get more specific in the policy, but, but we, we could just outline it in this ordinance and make it, I say, simple to just say, we'll develop a policy or a policy shall be addressed, uh, in, in, in addressing, um, a specific, um, incident or, or, you know, act of violence in a as it is occurring, uh, for an immediate response.
Okay.
I, I don't think we have to develop all of the, you know, here, there twos and all that in order to put something that just says, we'll develop some policy around that.
Okay.
And that's what I agree to, and I would say, um, Ms. Carol, that um, you know, in the next thirty days, maybe we can have a department meeting about and, you know, get the input, and you can present it to councilmembers to say, this is what we came up with, so we can be in to know that something is happening because it is concerning. And what we've done is we've just, um, you know, kicked the can down the road. And we, we had a critical time now that we just can't keep kicking it. Anything can happen, like, somebody could show up again at Brainerd with a gun. Like, these stories that we don't hear about, but we get these phone calls from our constituents, and then at what point is it too late? That we're going to say, man, if we would have just went ahead and put something in place. We can't, we, we've lost too many bodies. We can't keep saying, you know, to- today, today is not the time, or let's put it off to another time. Like, we've got to do something now. Everybody's ideas are great and could be included, however, we need to include it. Um, and that's why I prefaced it when we opened it, that um, we need to make sure that it's, um, that there's a due process for people that if, you know, that parent or whoever want to overturn the ban or get some other input, that, that's, they have the opportunity to do that. Um, but also, I lacked to include making sure that our employees were protected, the managers, so they most definitely need to be on there now, and Phil is going to work on that. And then we'll get the other policies and stuff working under the department.
Okay, thank you for all the feedback, and I'll make sure I follow up with Councilwoman, and then we'll make it happen.
Thank you. Ms. Hunter, you might want to wait just one more moment.
Okay.
Councilman Hester, sir.
Councilwoman, uh, Coonrod, thank you for your thoughtfulness. Um, one of the amendments, uh, ordinance, and I'm with my colleagues, it's, it's a great ordinance. It's definitely something we have to address. And we clean it up a little bit, I think this is a winner.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Phil, you got your order.
All right, I see no further lights. I just have a quick, um, question. Similar topic and not necessarily exactly the same, Phil. Um, in the case of a threat of mass violence, this is very specific to our community centers, either on the property or at an event that is related to community centers. Um, what's, what protection is already in place for this, for example, in this building? Or in any other city building? Are there already legal protections against threats of mass violence?
Um, this particular ordinance, um, was based upon something that was adopted for schools here in the state. And I think that is much more involved right now based upon the stuff that was going on in Nashville recently with the school violence and the deaths that occurred over there. Uh, definitely, we do need to have that regarding any city building and city property. I believe there are specific rules that we have in this building that regulate the ability for anyone to be able to bring a firearm in. That's the reason we have all of our requirements outside on the doors here at this point in time as to what's available, but we could make this broader if you wished.
I'm just curious if it might apply to all city buildings and not just the community centers. If we're talking about threats of mass violence, then any of our employees, regardless of where they work in a city building, should be protected.
Protected.
Just a thought.
And it, it can be broadened if you wish.
That's a, you know, that's a great idea, Ken, because that just, uh, prompted a thought that we have a group of guys that uh, work in at-risk communities that, you know, could be very challenging and going around gang members and different people. Um, and so those guys need to be protected too, you know, because they, they put themselves in some very heated situations. Um, so yes, thank you for bringing it up.
All right, see no further lights. Councilwoman, thank you very much, uh, for bringing this forward. Uh, and with nothing- Uh, and with nothing further, we have.
Planning.
Yeah. I will adjourn to planning and zoning. Sherman Lefford.
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to a special called Planning and Zoning Committee Meeting. This is not our regular, where we hear zoning cases coming through Planning Commission onto City Council, but we have a two-hour limited presentation today on Plan Chattanooga I know you all are excited about, and very, now, we've, what are we looking at, uh, Michael, about ten minutes?
Yes.
Okay. All right, very good. So to kick us off, Dan, go ahead.
Yes, sir.
Oh, hang on one second. Uh, let me ask for a motion on the minutes from our last meeting, please.
So, Luke.
All right, minutes will stand without objection. Dan?
Council, first, I wanted to just thank you so much for your support for the last year for the Department of Planning and RPA. Um, you may not know, but for forty-five years, the RPA has managed our federal mandated metropolitan planning organization, um, or develops all of our federal transportation funds that come to this county. Um, right now, we have over five hundred million dollars worth of federal transportation projects under construction, so we are very blessed at the moment with a lot of federal transportation funds. That's great. Um, we have done, over, over the years, the city obviously has done neighborhood plans, we've had a parks plan, we've done area plans. Well, when I started here about three years ago, I realized that we needed to really bring all of our plans up to date. Our downtown plan is more than twenty years old. Um, so Plan Chattanooga is that effort to unite all of our plans and to get every part of the city planned at one time. Um, and the reason again is because we wanna be able to use this plan to guide growth, to anticipate, um, our issues, and then to fund new infrastructure. And so I'm gonna introduce our consultants. Um, first, Michael Curtis, who, uh, is gonna lead, I guess, the rest of the presentation.
Great. Thanks, Dan. So, I'm Michael Curtis with Planning Next, representing the consultant team. And, so I'm gonna give you an idea of what, some of the things you'll see in the plan, and then, um, kind of show you where we are in the process, and then I'll let Dan tell us about what comes next. But, um, so as Dan said, this is a corporate plan for the city, and it is unique in that it is the first time the city has attempted to undertake a citywide plan for where and how you'll grow, and how you'll use infrastructure to support that growth over ten, twenty years. We started this process, um, about a year ago. We're in the third round of public input. We're asking for feedback on our draft recommendations, and we're gearing up for, um, eventual adoption from you all. Um, so we hope you have your support on that. Um, we'll be gathering input in the third round for probably a month or maybe longer, and then early next year, the plan in a refined form will be, um, before you all. So we've been really clear on when we're communicating with people, like, what this plan is and what it is not. So it's a guide, it's a long-term policy guide, you know, it does include actions, specific projects, policies, and programs that you can implement, but it doesn't guarantee funding for any specific projects. Um, it doesn't change the zoning that's in place today, but it does make recommendations that could be used to inform future zoning. So there are four goals that really set the plan's foundation, and they address things like quality places, uh, neighborhoods, and housing, and, uh, transportation, and natural systems, and they all relate to three overarching themes, including equity, economic prosperity, and environmental stewardship. The plan includes two main parts. There's a citywide portion, which really addresses centers and corridors, where to focus growth and change, and what areas to preserve and not change. And then there are a series of area plans, which really focus on more specifics, um, in terms of, uh, the recommendations in different parts of the city. So we also had a very rigorous, uh, technical analysis effort, and we compared what might happen under the business-as-usual approach, um, kind of the no-planning scenario, to, um, various scenarios in terms of focusing growth in centers and corridors, and we found that there are numerous benefits to this approach, which is what the plan's based on. So what will you actually see in the plan? Um, the plan includes several policy maps, I'm gonna go through those quickly, and then there are goals, objectives, and specific projects, policies, and programs. The plan's also based on a series of place types, and the place types are really intended to help people visualize various forms of development, and what that could look like, and what form it could take, um, over the long term, and really help people understand what their community could look like. Um, they're organized into four types, uh, centers, corridors, residential areas, and special districts. So there's a citywide place type map, which identifies where throughout the city these place types, uh, would be encouraged to occur, and in many cases, they reinforce, uh, existing patterns, but in some areas, uh, particularly along, uh, your corridors and in certain centers, they're really encouraging a different type of development than what exists there And then similarly, for transportation, we've thought about streets in terms of their surrounding context, so really applying, um, different functions of streets in terms of how those streets are used and what surrounds them. So streets in downtown and more urban areas might look different than streets in suburban or rural parts of the city. And then the third citywide piece is a Parks and Greenways map, and this is based on the Parks and Outdoors Plan, but we've, uh, kind of taken this a step further and shown some of the, um, uh, recommended, uh, greenway trails and connections. And then the plan does include, uh, a series of objectives, and many of these objectives relate back to recent plans that you all have done, uh, including the One Chattanooga, the Housing Action Plan, and the Parks and Outdoors Plan that I mentioned. So then in the area plans, there are eight of these within the city, um, thirteen within Hamilton County, and the area plans, each of them have a centers and corridors map, a place dive map, and then most of the areas have some focus locations where we show more specifically at a neighborhood scale, or at a intersection, or a specific site, what could that look like in the future if it were developed differently? So this is an example in the Brainerd corridor, um, Brainerd Road and Germantown Road, showing a more, uh, mixed-use redevelopment concept. We've been very clear, showing these examples, that they are just examples, they're not specific redevelopment proposals, but just one way to kind of implement the ideas in the plan. And then another of the focus areas was North Gate Mall. So we showed here how the mall could transition over time into a more walkable, uh, mixed-use town center with multiple buildings on that site. And then throughout the entire plan, there are several big ideas. These are some of the big ideas that recur throughout all the chapters, so you'll see recommendations about developing a broader range of housing types, uh, focusing growth and change in centers and corridors, um, in order to really limit the impacts on existing neighborhoods, uh, transforming major streets, um, evolving some of the industrial areas that may be not as desirable for industrial in the future, and then developing a system, trails and greenways. That's really big. So, how can people provide input on the draft plan? So, we had a, uh, open house last night, uh, last week, we had two virtual meetings where we shared some of what I just shared with you. Uh, we're collecting input on the Plan Chattanooga website, planchattanooga.org, probably, uh, through the next month or so. And then, uh, RPA is conducting additional meetings with some neighborhood groups. People can reach out by email or phone to set those up. And, Dan, do you wanna explain kind of what comes next?
Sure. So, Council, um, this is a draft, um, and I like to say that, you know, over the last year, it was fun to have public meetings and to listen to folks, but it's more fun when you have something to look at. You can look at a plan for your area, your neighborhood, you can understand, um, some of the, the background that went into this document. Um, so we're gonna, we're gonna have more public meetings, we really encourage folks to invite us to their neighborhood meetings. Um, we want, we wanna get a lot, use this planning process really to help folks understand, um, the challenges that we have here in the city. I try to remind everyone that we have about forty-seven thousand children and young adults in our public schools, another ten thousand in our private schools, and about twenty-five thousand in colleges here, so growth is going to continue. Um, we need to just be very, um, you know, open and honest about our challenges. Um, we are looking for, um, over the next few months, we're gonna be working with another one of our consultants, Kimberly Horn, and Carta, to think about, uh, how this plan, how mobility, uh, implementation kind of comes in play with this plan. So this plan looks at a lot of our land use issues, um, our connectivity issues, our growth challenges, our zoning, um, it will relate to zoning in the future, but really we wanna lay on the back end of this, how we pay for future transportation improvements. So I'll stop there and see if there's any questions.
Very good, and we do have one question. Chairman?
So, Dan, you hit on it a little bit, but I, I think, um, it matters, you know, when you, when you look at, at this question, does transportation drive the place, or does the place drive transportation? And depending on how you answer that question is, is to how this looks, and, you know, I, I think as we grow, um, in particularly parts of our city, um, that became incorporated, uh, I think it were, it was the, uh, sort of the trails that the farmers used to go, uh, you know, feed the livestock, and, and now we've turned them into roads, but, um, I, I think it's critical that we look at transportation driving the place, so that we're not, you know, creating bottlenecks and, and log jams, and, uh, as, as we decide where growth needs to go in the city. And obviously, you know, you could, you, you, um, create a more dense location, you can offer services more efficiently, the further out in the city you go, the more expensive those services get. Obviously, uh, we wind up putting housing on roads that can't handle it, you know, just can't handle the traffic. Um, those are the types of things I feel like we need to really take a look at when we're considering this plan.
So, I mentioned the, um, the federal transportation funds we have, which is, again, our, our motor fuel tax that is coming back to us to, to improve, um, a lot of the interstate highways, which honestly, a lot of the interstate traffic is passing right through here. You know, obviously, it helps us as local residents that live here, but we get a lot of traffic, you know, coming from other states.
Believe me, I, I know.
From last week, yeah.
Especially when there's a wreck on that interstate.
Um, through, uh, we, we have a, a plan, a planning process underway right now in unincorporated Hamilton County, and in the county, we identified a hundred and thirty million dollars with a local safety and other improvements that are needed. So those are projects that we're not gonna get federal money for, and we, we're gonna have the same needs here in the city. We're just, we're gonna, um, I, I tell Jeremy in Public Works, you know, we're, we're really trying to figure out how to help them build projects over the next five, ten, twenty years that are gonna keep our community safe, keep us all moving, you know, around and getting to our jobs or schools and things like that. But we definitely have to think, we can't always just rely on Tennessee DOT to help us manage our, our, our traffic and things.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman. Dan, I'm not seeing any further lights, but that, that doesn't mean you get to go yet. Sorry. Uh, do have a couple of quick questions, because RPA has engaged over the years in very extensive area plans. Uh, let's go with eleven, let's go with twelve specifically. Is it your intent, or the RPA's intent, to use the Plan Chattanooga, twelve, twelve is, obviously would be outside of that, I understand, to use that to overshadow the work that was done with the area plans that we have, such as River Ridge?
Absolutely not.
Okay. And I think that's important to note.
Well, we've, we've tried to bring them up to the same standard and the same timeline, um, and so we looked at the consultants in our staff, looked at River Ridge again, looked at Area Three, but they were largely complete, so it didn't require a little more.
Yeah, so we, we included Area Three, River Ridge, and Area Eleven, uh, East Breder, uh, they, they're updated, but largely similar plans, uh, we included everything that was there. There were some things that had already been implemented or no longer relevant, so those changed, but, you know, in general, they are the same plan, they're brought in and made consistent with the other areas.
So they were heavily influenced in Plan Chattanooga, I would assume, given the work has been recently done?
Yes.
And I know that we've identified, especially in Area Three, we've identified, identified some areas we missed.
So Plan Chattanooga includes all the areas, including Three and Eleven, um, so each area is a chapter, and so we included the, those previous plans, but we updated some of the content in those plans.
Okay. And that's based on probably conversation that's come from this diet, and obviously the community.
Exactly, yes.
Um, Dan, I'm understanding that we are going to more than likely look at this after the first of the year for Chattanooga, and I think I said thank you, uh, for that the other day at our MPO, um, meeting, um, for those of you who are, who are following that, and I think that's wise, 'cause we have a lot going on, obviously, with the zoning amendments coming online as well in January. So if we have any questions about the Plan Chattanooga, we can reach out to any, anyone at RPA.
Absolutely. And I'm glad you mentioned the zoning, um, 'cause this, this is gonna be our guide for zoning in the future. Um, not just individual zoning cases, but we have entire districts that we think, um, could, could be considered by the community and by council for, for upzoning or changing the zoning, to allow more mixed uses or something in, in some of, some different areas of the city. We wanna use this planning process to help guide some new investment in, in parts of the city that haven't seen private investment in some years. So again, we, we have a lot of, you know, I think this is an exciting time. We wanna welcome the community and other, you know, businesses and neighborhoods to go look at these plans, the draft documents in their area, and please give us any feedback.
Okay, very good. I'm seeing no further lights, gentlemen, thank you for your presentations this afternoon, Council. Uh, we will stand in recess, we do have an attorney-client, uh, till five fifteen.